Ms. Hockenberry?
Here.
Mr. Lawrence?
Here.
Mr. Meeks?
Here.
Ms. Teetz?
Here.
Mr. Wodisca?
Here.
And Mr. Lofterson and Ms. Rogers are absent.
Can I get a motion to adopt the agenda?
No vote.
A second? I'll second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the agenda is adopted. And for the election of officers, we're turning it over to the plan director, Mr. Snyder.
I open the floor for nominations for the Chair of the Planning Commission for the year 2012. Do I hear any nominations?
Mr. Snyder, you can call on me.
Ms. Hockenberry.
Thank you, thank you. It's my great pleasure to nominate Melissa Teetz for Chairman.
Second.
I hear a first and a second for nominating Mr. Teetz. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none by show of hands. Can I see a vote for the Chair of the Planning Commission for 2012? I open the nominations for Vice Chair of the Planning Commission for the year 2012.
I nominate John Lawrence.
A second?
Hearing a first and a second. Are there any other nominations for Vice Chair of the Planning Commission? Hearing none. Can I have a show of hands for all those in favor of Mr. Lawrence as Vice Chair? I want to recognize that the Planning Commission has chosen Melissa Teetz as Chair of the Commission and Mr. John Lawrence as Vice Chair of the Commission for the year 2012. And Madam Chair, I return the meeting to you for continuing this Planning Commission meeting. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Snyder. Thank you. Thank everyone for the vote. And I look forward to one more year of being able to chair the Planning Commission and working with all of you great people and with the great staff we have. All the planners and Mr. Snyder and Ms. G who keeps us going and tells us what to do when we're supposed to do it, which is very helpful. I guess at this point, Ms. Hockenberry-
I just want to say that I think you've done a wonderful job this year-
Thank you.
-of doing things, and so is John. And working, you know, with Mr. Snyder and getting everything going full keel, that's been good. It's been good.
Yeah, I think it's been a good year too.
And thank you, Ms. G.
The staff has really helped us a lot.
Always.
Mr. Lawrence, did you want to say anything?
No. Thank you, and as always, it's- I feel a lot of fun being on the Planning Commission, which nobody really tells you when you join. No.
Don't we get to play musical chairs?
Well, that's what I was going to ask. I had no plans for any reseating unless there were members of the Planning Commission who would like to be moved.
I'm happy. I'm not on the list.
Yeah, and we can also, yeah, we can also do it. If you have a preference, you could email me and we could reseat at the next meeting. I know I was at that far seat that Lenny was at. I actually liked it out there.
I agree.
Because you have all the extra room. But sometimes people may want to move in. So, yeah, if you have a preference, email me and we can talk about moving around a little bit.
I don't charge much. Buy the seat.
Okay. So do we have any Planning Commissioner reports? I don't think much has been going on. I know I went to watch night and it was great weather, not too cold, also not too hot, just nice weather. And it was- I was in the kids' alley for a long time and it was quite swamped, so it seemed like we had a really good turnout.
It was an absolutely huge- I was going to mention that too if you hadn't. It was a huge, huge undertaking and it was a brilliant success. The most crowded I've ever seen it. And with people sitting outside at Dogwood, tables and everything, it was just quite a scene. And even at midnight, when the star came down, the entire block was packed.
Yeah. And I think we have to thank Barb Cram for that.
Oh, absolutely.
Barb has just spent so many hours on watch night. She took it over from when Dave Eckert did it with the Tenner Hill Group and she just jumped wholeheartedly into it and she's really made it her life for the last couple of months. So I just want to say thank you to Barb because it was a wonderful event.
And may I add thank yous to the sheriffs, police, the fire department-
Yeah, all the staff that was there.
You know, and all the staff, city staff who were there manning and helping to pick up. It was amazing. Another thing I noticed, when everybody left around 12:20 or something, there wasn't that much in the street at all. It was really quite a nice thing to see.
Yeah, not only was the staff out there doing a great job, they seemed to be having a great time. And, you know, it was just, it was a wonderful event. I think it went really well. Any other comments from Planning Commissioners? Do we have any emails or letters or anything for the Planning Commissioners?
I have none.
Okay, thank you. So we'll move on to the Plan Director's report. Mr. Snyder?
Yes. Wanted to let you know, first of all, that we have completed hiring for the vacant position. Mr. Joe Hodge has started at the end of last week and is working for us as a permit and counter services technician. He comes to us with a lot of experience, having 16 years of experience in design build field where he's done work primarily in Alexandria and Arlington. And he has an educational background that includes architecture and planning from the University of Maryland. So he's going to provide us a really good service, we think, at the counter and working across the various functions of our organization. Also, we've pretty much completed a purge of a lot of old files that we had shredded and you're welcome to come up and take a look sometime. The building safety staff went through all old permits and we're- we, I don't know how many cubic feet, but many cubic feet of plans that were outdated and able to be destroyed were. Ms. G completed a project that she began under my predecessor, culling through all the files in the office and organizing them. And that's a huge task and not everyone's favorite task to do. She's completed that and that, by getting rid of things that are unnecessary, duplicative, makes our job easier and we can work better. We're going to establish an area for the public to review plans at the end of the hallway on the third floor of the West Wing. The drafting table's set up. We have a place that we can keep plans for the public to come in, so there'll be more space for them to look at plans if they want to choose to come look at that. And that area's been cleaned up and gotten old files and things gotten rid of. So we've now got our flat screens hooked up in the office so we can show announcements and other things and we can go in on the computer and pull up property information for customers, including an ADA accessible screen. So a lot of improvements that will help us do a better job, we hope, with the public, make it a more welcoming place and a better workplace, and so we're excited about that. We've used this time reasonably to do that and so prepares us for next year. So, again, glad that Mr. Hodge is on board and we're fully staffed. Mr. Garrison Kidd is doing some work for us and we're beginning to see some preliminary work on the small area plan, so we'll advise you of that as it goes along. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Snyder, and thank you for working on the space up there, especially the painting that you did, that the staff worked with and did, it just, it looks so much better. So I look forward to going up there and seeing the new changes you've made. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Snyder? Mr. Lawrence?
Just two quick ones. One is, what's the status of 24-hour fitness? It seems like it's getting closer and closer and closer.
They have, the financing that had to take place has closed and that is going forward. I spoke with a representative in Texas and he said they're now looking toward a fall opening. There is a pre-construction meeting scheduled by Doug Fraser, the building official. I believe it's 17th of January, so we're going to have a pre-construction meeting. So what's happened is the delay in getting the financing, the time that took, and that's reflective of difficult economic times. But it is going forward and should be open, we hope, toward the end of next year.
You mean the end of this year?
Correct.
Okay.
We are in that new 2012 room.
Yeah, where you're still writing the wrong date on your checkbook and things like that. Did the HARB ever meet in December about the Fulton Street property?
Yes, they did, and Ms. G and I talked about that today. And Ms. G, you might just, if you would, report on what happened on the 21st of December, I believe it was.
The HARB met on the 21st of December with the applicant. He had filed an application to demolish the historic structure located at what the former address was, 610 Fulton Avenue. The HARB denied the application because the applicant, in responding to the five questions contained in the historic ordinance, proved that he knew that it was structurally sound and could be rehabilitated at a fairly reasonable price. He just wanted to start the one-year clock, which he has done, and the HARB has advised him of the information that he needs to provide city staff throughout the next 12 months before any demolition permit could be issued.
Now, what's the normal process? I mean, how many of these have we had? I'm just curious. I sent around to everybody today the listing of the property and the fact that, you know, I had friends who had looked at it and they basically read it and said, "This isn't really for sale." Who makes the judgment as to, you know, whether they're really, whether he is really trying to sell it in good faith or, you know, really trying to wait out the clock?
Although not defined in the ordinance, the staff has defined a criteria. One, we have to know what the initial listing date was, where it has been listed, if it's on multiple listings, as he agreed to do preservation-oriented sites as well. How he established the price or the value of the property and any offers he's received throughout the 12 months and why he chose not to accept those offers.
Understanding that the price that has been set is one with which both the private appraiser and the city appraiser defined as the value of the property. Of course, we're going into the spring, so I would guess real estate activity would be higher then, so we may see what happens. But from what we've, what he's described and what we've seen, it appears to be a good-faith effort. There also was representation that there would be a number of ads in historic magazines and websites. So we'll continue to monitor that and see that that's done. It is a little bit of an unusual situation, as you described in your email. There is not permission at this point to build on the second lot, nor is that the preferred thing. So hopefully people, if they are inquiring, can understand that there are two lots, but there can only be one house if the historic house is kept and renovated or expanded.
Okay. As long as you're going to keep watching it, that's all I can really ask right now. Okay? Thank you.
Ms. Hockenberry?
Any other updates on any of the other projects coming through the Hilton Garden Inn or anything?
Hilton Garden Inn, my understanding was they were soliciting additional bids on the project from contractors. One other thing I might mention in your package, I believe we included a draft of some additional work that's been done on the Greenway Downs project-
Right, right.
-including some draft language for possible text change. And some of this is based on feedback we got at the last meeting. Our thought is to develop a schedule and sit down with some of the commissioners and some of the folks that you've identified and begin having a discussion, see if we can chart a path to have some meetings and move forward on that. But if you, as you see, as you read through it and see that, have thoughts, we're certainly happy to hear those. I think the code, as it's suggested here, is pretty straightforward, but if you have thoughts, please share those with us.
Okay, any other questions for Mr. Snyder? I do notice that on the unscheduled, we've got several joint work sessions with city council that we need to have done on the pedestrian bicycle plan and South Washington street transportation plan. I mean, when do you see us being able to do those, so those projects can start moving forward?
We're presently looking at, there's one copy of a draft plan for the PED plan that's being reviewed now for content and editing. So hopefully we'll finish that this week and then we'll be trying to schedule the exact date. I talked to Wendy Block Sanford about that today. We haven't set a date yet. We've got to work that through with city manager, but that's the first one on the list. And it's about ready, so a lot of editing and formatting's been done the last couple of weeks.
All right, okay.
We'll keep you posted on that, though.
Yeah, I'm just a little concerned because I'm assuming we'll have to have a joint work session on the Property Maintenance Code Amendment again, perhaps, since we're formally recommending it. And then we, you know, we have all these different ZOAC issues on the table that I think we're going to have to run through them. And I know it's going to be hard to get enough space for all of it.
There is a lot that's coming forward, so one of the questions is how many things can fit on the commission and council's agenda, plus we want to get that area plan coming forward.
Right.
Part of the thought on the Greenway Downs was that if we can have some preliminary meetings and get a sense of what the reaction is, then we are in a better place to have a follow-up work session with council and the commission. So that was my thought at present, was to have some of that, have some more detailed conversations about it before we go back to the council. But if you all have different thoughts, happy to entertain those as well.
No, I think we all agree that that was a good process. I'm just, I am concerned, I think we have a lot of things here that we're going to be stacking up and we're going to be kind of having to wait to get them through the council with the joint work session. That's going, it's going to-
I appreciate that.
Yeah, especially with the budget.
That's true. It's, there's only so many meetings, so we'll work on trying to get them in front of the council.
Okay. Looking at the agenda, we do not have any old business. We do have new business. The first thing is assignment of planning commissioners to other city boards, commissions, committees, for liaison. So Ruth couldn't be here because she is traveling right now and said that she would be happy to stay on recreation and parks. Do you kind of want to just run through the list? So if we'll go ahead and leave Ruth on that, because Ms. Rogers asked to stay on there. On the Architectural Advisory Board, Mr. Carney had been on that board, and did anyone have any feelings or thoughts about being on that board or commission? I wonder if, well, since Mr. Lofterson isn't here, maybe he would be a good choice for this. Because he does have, he does have a background in development early on, so, and actually, I think he might find that an interesting group to work with. Ms. Hockenberry, you obviously stay on Arts and Cultural Task Force. Mr. Wodisca, you said you were willing to stay on CACT. Thank you. I will stay on the Economic Development Committee unless someone else really wants to go to early Friday morning meetings. And of course, you guys are, you're welcome to attend because they are public meetings.
Just a note on, there is no EDC meeting this Friday.
Oh, thank you.
Just to-
Always wait for Thursday, you never know. Okay.
On that note, are they sending out notices nowadays to everybody like John had asked for?
No. But I did hear there was no meeting this Friday, so early alert for those who might have other things to do early Friday morning.
Yeah, what they did was, when this started, like, a year and a half ago, we had pushed that it was a joint session between the EDC, the Planning Commission, and the EDA, so anybody who wanted to go could attend and speak.
Right, right.
At some point last year, it got changed to it's just an EDC meeting. It is only a council subcommittee meeting. So we're attending as public and, you know, if they let us talk, we talk, but it's just changed from the way it was initially set up.
My understanding is it had something to do with the way the closed sessions were set up as well, and that this was advice from council, that it would be, simplify the whole process to turn it back into a subcommittee meeting. But that was the explanation given. You know, their explanation is it's still a public meeting and everyone can still attend, but we do attend at their pleasure. Anyway, so, but I'm still willing to be the main person for that, and although, like I said, anytime anything's going on, I will definitely try to pass it on to the rest of the Planning Commission. For the EDA meetings, did Mr. Lawrence, Mr. Hockenberry, do you want to stay as the-
Yeah, I'm fine. It's just-
John is overwhelmed with the possibility of it.
Yeah, well, I'm overwhelmed with basketball on Tuesdays for January, so I'll probably end up relying on you if the practices are at 6:15, but if they're at 7:30, I'll be there.
As long as it doesn't conflict with any of my sports activities either.
Well, yeah.
Well, that's why there's two of you in the hope, and if-
Wrestling is important.
Wrestling and basketball.
And if there's a, if there's a very important EDA agenda and neither of you can attend, I'll try to attend, so we'll be fine. Mr. Meeks, would you be willing to stay on Historical Commission? Did anyone want to wrestle that from him?
Good meetings.
Well, they don't have a quorum right now, correct? They're still working on it? So you're there on hold?
Aren't you happy?
Okay.
She needs me to break the glass.
Housing Commission. Ms. Hockenberry, did you want to remain on there?
Yeah, I'm on the affordable housing.
Okay. Mr. Lawrence, did you want to remain on Library Board?
Yes.
Okay. And Mr. Wodisca, would you remain on pedestrian bicycle and traffic common? Will that be going on much longer? I guess it's going to be winding down soon.
I think it is winding down. We're getting a report sent to our homes in the next week to look at a draft. Got that email today, and so I assume it's going to be wrapping up relatively soon, since we're at that stage in the process.
Yeah, that's the draft I referred to earlier.
Okay, great. I guess for the Rules and Procedure Committee, it remains the same members. So that's an easy one. Then on the School Board Facility Advisory Working Group, that stays the same members as well. Mr. Wodisca, are you willing to-
I think that's Meeks, not Lofterson.
Oh, is it? Oh, you're right. Okay, can we correct that under the School Board Facility? It's Mr. Meeks.
Oh, Meeks Warren. Mr. Lofterson?
Yes.
Yeah. Because Mr. Lawrence and Mr. Meeks are the representatives and I'm kind of an alternate.
And it doesn't meet on yet.
Well, that's the-
It should. It should meet now more than it should have before.
Right. It was supposed to be meeting now.
Put that in writing.
Well, I, I have to say, I'm a little confused because my understanding is that that leapfrog would become, which is the code name for the School Board Facility Advisory Working Group, if you don't know, leapfrog. My understanding is it was supposed to be really active during the pre-construction phase of TJ, so I'm not, I'm really kind of concerned about it. Mr. Snyder, maybe you could send in a query to the school board to when, what role did they expect leapfrog to play if they're not, because they were supposed to be part of this planning process.
Okay.
And the whole point being that the Planning Commission know what's going on because at some point, they're going to have to have a site plan. And it would probably be good for them, for us to know what's going on.
Well, but there are other issues, the Child Development Center, the-
Right. I'm just saying, in the short term, my understanding is that you were supposed to be meeting because we were supposed to be getting ready for a site plan. And in the long term, we have the long-term issues of the high school, you know, the elementary school facilities, both Mount Daniel and TJ beyond the current expected addition, plus CDC. Okay.
I did have a meeting along with city manager. We had a briefing with the new superintendent last month, and so I'll make inquiries and the question really is what role should the Planning Commission play in this function, correct?
Well, I guess the question is, one, how are the leapfrog meetings on hold right now? Because the role, it was supposed to play a role in leading up to this TJ addition, partly to keep the council and the Planning Commission informed about the process. Because there is, you know, there are planning aspects and zoning aspects as well to this project. And I guess secondary is like, you know, I guess at some point, you will have a planner assigned to that.
We've had some initial inquiries about the construction at Thomas Jefferson, for example. We haven't had meetings yet with those, with the group that's going to be implementing, but they want to have a meeting. Wendy Block Sanford is the person I indicated would probably be our contact on that particular project at Thomas Jefferson.
Then we're on the Tree Commission, and Mr. Wodisca?
No, I nominate Mr. Lofterson.
Okay. Is that good for you?
Yeah, that's fine with me. Though I have not been contacted by the Tree Commission. I'm not sure they have a quorum either, so.
They added members, so I thought they were at quorum because they, we've gotten reports from them.
Yeah, with all the traffic stuff, you know.
I'll just make sure that City Arbors should be aware that a planning commissioner should be receiving the materials.
Okay. Well, and you're right, Mr. Lawrence, it makes a lot of sense to put Mr. Lofterson on that, so that way he has two, and, because Mr. Wodisca already had several things to do.
Especially since Bob's not here.
Yeah. Well, yes. And then Mr. Meeks is on the Watershed Advisory Committee. I have his appointment by council, and I'm on it for VEPIS, and I, we're almost to the end of that project as well. Well, we just got the executive summary and we have to read it and comment on it. Really? Okay, I will make a note to forward that to you and, with Mr. Hicks is copied, so Okay. So that takes us through all of the appointments. Next is the annual report, so. Did anyone have any comments or any changes they wanted to see in this? Okay, seeing none, then I think we're good with that. Mr. Snyder, normally we present, or I would, the Chair, I would present this to the council, so I guess we need to get on a future agenda for a council meeting.
Good.
So if you can look at that and maybe just tell me, maybe two dates, the next two dates or something, we could figure out which one would work for us. And then we'll have, we'll need copies of it for the council members. And then the annual action plan, the annual program, it's 9C. Okay, and we discussed this at our last work session, and Ms. G nicely went through and made the changes for us of what we discussed. And does anyone see any additional changes or comments on this?
Do we, sorry, I just, do we need to add a fourth to, just say that we're going to continue our regular work on subdivisions and everything else that walks in the door that we have to deal with? Or is this more non-regular items?
My understanding, I mean, the way it was presented when we put this back together last year, because it had lapsed for a few years, is really just kind of more of our vision outside our normal job. So, you know, outside the normal recommendations of council and that kind of thing. So I don't think we need to do that, because I think that's expected of us regardless. So this is more about the emphasis on what we care about, which is really getting the comprehensive plan updated, getting the small area plans done, and working through the ZOAC recommendations to make, to fix the zoning code where we can. Any other comments on it? Okay. Looks like we have no other business, so we can move on to approval of meeting, of minutes?
I don't care.
Oh, yes.
Do you want to adopt this program?
You're right. I'm sorry. We, okay. We did adopt it last year, didn't we?
Yes.
Yeah, we did. Okay, so can we adopt on just a yea and nay vote, or do we? Okay. All those in favor of adopting the 2012 annual program for the Planning Commission of the City of Falls Church?
Does it have to be in motion, or it doesn't?
Does it have to be in motion?
Yeah, it should be.
Okay.
I move that we adopt the 2012 annual program for the Planning Commission of the City United, the City United, oh, yeah.
The Falls Church.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. So then we have a motion and we've seconded. Is all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so it's adopted? I really couldn't remember what we did last year, other than put it together. Okay. So our last agenda item would be approval of minutes for December 5, 2011. And does anyone have any changes or, Mr. Wodisca?
Yeah, I do. On line 307, it lists me stating something that didn't sound right to me. I don't remember my exact words, but I thought that there should be the word "not" after the word "is." Mr. Wodisca stated that the proposed use is not in conflict with the existing lease as it is not a retail use, nor, and I think this would say, "Should the motion proposed be tied to concerns expressed by Creative Cauldron?" I don't have the tape, but that's my recollection of the sentence.
Yeah, I agree. You're right, that's not, that was not in line exactly with what you had said, as I remembered it as well. Okay, do we have any other changes?
Do we adopt with the changes?
I guess second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the minutes are approved with the changes required. Okay, the minutes are approved with the changes requested. Can I get a motion to adjourn? Mr. Meeks?
So move.
Can I get a second?
Second it.
We are adjourned.